The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Did we miss that? Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the September 13 Westminster City Council meeting. As of June 14, the city has resumed meeting in person for city council meetings with the option for virtual participation by council and staff as necessary. In addition to in-person attendance, the community may also participate remotely by watching the live stream on the City YouTube channel or dialing in by phone with the instructions on the meeting agenda webpage. We continue to support multiple opportunities for public comment, including in-person testimony, email, voicemail, and live remote audio. The Agenda section of the city website is the best place to check for details on participating in council meetings. I'd ask everyone to remember to please turn off your cell phones, or at least turn off the ringer, and now join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we start, I'd like to address that this past weekend marked the 20th anniversary of the day thousands of families lost their loved ones. I doubt any of us will forget where we were on September 11. I would like to ask my colleagues, city staff in attendance, and community members here with us tonight and watching at home, to please join me in a moment of silence to honor the lives lost that day, the family members who have grieved for their loved ones these past 20 years, and the first responders who put their lives on the line that day to save countless others. Thank you. I'll now ask City Clerk Fitch to please do the roll call.
Certainly. Mayor Protem Demont.
Present.
Mayor Sykes.
Here.
Counselor Seymour.
Here.
Counselor Scully.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Present.
And Counselor Vols.
Here.
The next item before us is the consideration of the minutes of the preceding meeting. Is there a motion? Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the August 23 meeting and the August 30 special meeting as presented.
Counselor Seymour.
A second.
There is a motion and a second. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, this is a voice vote. All those in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The meeting minutes have been approved. The next item is presentations. And tonight, we're going to do the presentation of the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, GFOA, has awarded the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award to the City of Westminster for its 2021 budget. This award is the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting. Its attainment represents a significant achievement for our government and its management. This is the first year the city has received this prestigious award from GFOA. Now, on behalf of GFOA and its 21,000 members, Katrina Asher will present the award. Ms. Asher is the president of the Colorado GFOA, and she serves as the accounting manager at the City of Lafayette, Colorado. Ms. Asher, you're already at the podium. Please take it away.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and counselors. I am happy to be here to congratulate the City of Westminster's Policy and Budget Department on this significant achievement, being the Government Finance Officers Association's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the 2021 budget document. As you mentioned, this award is a very prestigious award. It is the highest form of recognition that is awarded for governmental budgeting. The program is designed to recognize state and local governments that prepare budget documents of the very highest quality, reflecting best practices in budget development and presentation. So to earn this recognition, a budget document must go through extensive program criteria reviews and excel as a policy document, a financial plan, and an operational guide and communications tool. Receiving this award represents a notable achievement on the part of the Policy and Budget Department, and being a first-year recipient is definitely an accomplishment worthy of recognition. So as a representative of the Colorado Government Finance Officers Association, I am pleased to present this Distinguished Budget Award to the Policy and Budget Department for the 2021 budget document.
Mr. Lindsay, would you like to say a few words?
Just a few words, please. First off, thank you, Katrina, for being here this evening. It's really an honor to have the President of CGFOA here. I'm really pleased to lead the great Policy and Budget Team that received this Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. There are many long hours and late nights that go into the production of a budget, as evidenced by the team's work the past couple of months on the proposed 2022 budget. Due to that, we're really excited for this recognition. This recognition denotes that the City of Westminster produces a budget document that meets best practices and meets or exceeds the standards as both a communications tool and a transparency tool for the city. The review or feedback that we received indicates that we have an easy-to-read budget, that the city's financial plan is clear, and that it shows that staff and council are prudent financial managers. I really wanted to thank the great team that I lead. We've got a few members here in the audience. Thank you very much. I also want to thank our partners in human resources, our budget partners across the organization, and for his continued support, Chief Financial Officer Larry Dorr. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsay. Before you step away, could I ask all members of your team to please stand up so we can give you another round of applause?
Absolutely.
Mr. Dorr, that's interesting. Thank you. Very well done. I once had someone communicate to me or express to me that the budget is the affirmative articulation of our values and priorities. Making sure we're clear, transparent with that is one of our biggest responsibilities, how we use taxpayer dollars. This is a big deal, and I just want to say thank you for helping us be transparent and accountable to our community. Thank you very much. The next item before us tonight is our consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just going to forget public comments altogether. The next item before us is public comments. The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to communicate with the city council on any topic they choose, unless there is a topic for which a public hearing is also scheduled. This evening, we have one public hearing. Item 10A, the public hearing on the proposed 2022 budget. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please hold your comments until we reach that agenda item later in the evening. The current public comment portion of the meeting is not intended to be conversational, but rather a direct communication from the public to their representatives. There are now four methods available for participation in public comment. You may testify in person, submit written email testimony, record a voicemail to be played back during the meeting, or request to speak live via the remote meeting link through the city clerk's office. Please see the posted agenda for details on how to participate using any of the methods available. At this time, I would ask the acting city clerk to please summarize the number of participates this evening and introduce our first speaker, if anyone has signed up.
Thank you. Yes, we have one person who signed up to speak live. We have zero people who have requested to speak virtually. There were no voicemails received by the deadline, and there was one email that was attached to the packet for your review. So the first speaker this evening is Amanda Lau.
Ms. Lau, please come forward. Just as a reminder, you have five minutes to speak. As you get close, at one minute, we will give you a warning to let you know your time is wrapping up.
Perfect, thank you. So my name is Amanda Lau. I am the owner of ABC Entertainment LLC, who operates the Kids Night Out program at City Park Rec Center. So in 1991, Friday Night Live was created in Westminster. Today, the program now operating as Kids Night Out across America will be celebrating a 30-year partnership of providing a fun, safe, and active place for kids ages seven to 14 with the City of Westminster. After an 18-month closure due to the pandemic, we are ecstatic and truly grateful to the members of this council for hopefully unanimously passing and approving our lease agreement to serve the families in Westminster once again. During our programs, kids can participate in a variety of games and activities such as swimming, sports tournaments, dancing to a live DJ, arts and crafts, and more. The program will run at City Park Recreation Center from 7:00 to 10:30 p.m. every Friday. Admission is $15 per participant. Masks will be required at this time for all participants. I would like to thank Tim Lockermeyer, Kira Closer, Chuck Skirbo, and Andrew Minton for their continued support of our program. Additionally, I'd like to thank Mayor Protem Demont for keeping us going in 2018. Pending consent, we will be having our grand opening this Friday at City Park Rec Center with our theme Sports Night, and we really look forward to hopefully serving the families in this community for a long time to come.
Thank you so much. And I think it's maybe telling or revealing slip of the tongue that I always call it Parents' Night Out, so it's an appreciated resource. I know that was the last person, or the only person, rather, who signed up for public comments. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward? To the podium at this time? All right, seeing none. The next item on our agenda is Report of City Officials. City Manager Tripp.
Thank you, Mayor Sykes. Mayor Sykes and Mayor Protem Demont, members of council, I do have a couple of comments tonight. First of all, I want to echo the comments made by Mayor Sykes concerning 9/11. That was 20 years ago. It seems for all of us that were around in that era and recall that, not being 20 years ago, that just like it was last week, because everybody can remember where they were that day. My thoughts and prayers go to the families and the survivors, who also carry with them extraordinary pain from what happened that day. You know, I want to particularly today, recognize, as people have in the 20 years, the first responders. But beyond that, public service, you know, the people who put their lives on the line, who dedicate themselves to this kind of work in our communities. I'm really proud of our public servants in our community and all of our departments, but tonight in particular, I want to point out our public safety folks, our first responders. And I want to tie it to something that's on the agenda tonight. I actually want to make note of the budget that is in front of you tonight that's been recommended. There's a large commitment in that budget to all of our employees to make sure that they have wages and benefits that allow them to take care of their families and to retire at an age where they can enjoy part of their life post-work with the City of Westminster. And this is an organization where people come to work when they're 20 years old and they retire when they're 60 or beyond. So it's a really proud moment, I think, this evening to put a budget in front of you that recognizes that, but in particular in the area of public safety. We've made tremendous gains in the past several years as to the pay and benefits and retirement program that we have for our public safety folks. Tonight, we're matching that within the entire workforce with some efforts that are in our budget in terms of the pension of all of our employees. So I'm proud of that. I'm proud of the investment that we're making in our budget to transparency, to infrastructure, to technology, to improve communication into our workforce. And so with that, there'll be a public hearing on it this evening, and we'll have a budget session on the 20th, just a week from tonight, where you'll have an opportunity to ask questions and provide further feedback, where we're very close to adopting our budget for the 2022 year. And we're very fortunate because of the shoulders of past people, you know, we had a foundation of savings and infrastructure in employees who are resilient and got us through 2020 and 2021 in really pretty remarkable condition, allowing us, on the budget that we've recommended to you, to take care of those folks and to also help them with some additional employees that are needed to provide service for this growing city. So I wanted to say that. I also, this evening, want to mention that... Just a second here. This is Historic Hispanic Heritage Month. It begins this Wednesday, September 15. The city will be celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month on our social media, and we will amplify opportunities for residents to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month across the Front Range. This past Friday evening, the mayor, Counselor Scully, and myself had an opportunity to attend a gala in Denver with an organization that provides in particular services to Latinx members of our community, and they've shown an interest in Westminster and recognize that we have folks here of need, so we maybe have something to come down the road on that. But thank you, Mayor and Counselor, for attending that. I thank you this evening for your service as well. When we talk about public service, there's those whose lives and families rely on wages and benefits from this, and then there are people like you who make almost nothing and are really here because you love your community and you're invested in supporting and, you know, taking tough actions on policies that are necessary for this to continue to be a great city. And I thank the people before us in the past 100 years in our city that had so much foresight back to the 1950s and our water rights and through the end of the 20th century and all the great moves that were made to have this city be what it is today. So I think it's just appropriate. That was a horrific thing that happened, a nine-11, but you know, out of that comes an appreciation and an understanding of the value of public service in a way that's pretty remarkable. So thanks for an opportunity to elaborate a little bit on that this evening.
Thank you very much, City Manager Tripp. The next item before us is City Council Comments. Do any of my colleagues have updates, comments, or thoughts? Mayor Protem Demont.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Tripp, for your words on 9/11. I certainly remember where I was. You know, as a son of a police officer, those kind of moments hit our family hard, and I think it's important for people to remember that those are the folks that run into danger when everybody else is trying to escape it. That day, in my mind, that was an attack really on our way of life, and it's important that our future generations understand that and that we remember it. I will say a silver lining that we also should focus on is 9/12, and that was a day when this country was very unified in its resolve about what we are about. And I always think that that's important for us to remember as we reflect upon that day. I wanted to share about an event that I had the honor to participate in that was put on by the Ramito Foundation here in Westminster at the West End on Saturday. The founders of the foundation are Richard and Jamie Ramito, who have four sons, who have been diagnosed with a disease called Duchenne muscular dystrophy. That disease, which I've never heard of before, but I have to tell you, is a very touching event for what they do. And that form of muscular dystrophy is a genetic disorder that afflicts approximately 15,000 to 20,000 boys in the United States alone. It has 100% death rate, and there is no treatment or cure. So Richard Ramito is actually a police officer in Thornton, or I'm not sure if he's current or retired, but I know there was a big law enforcement and first responder presence there that they were very honored, as well as their military. So if, you know, if you're a charitable person, I would look into this foundation and what they do. I think that the young men that they serve that have this affliction is really good, allow them to both spend time with other people who suffer this affliction, as well as be able to enjoy the little time that they have on this planet. It's a really touching event. So again, it's the Ramito Foundation, and I would encourage anybody to look into that and support that foundation. Lastly, the Inclusivity Board did meet this last week, and I have to admit that I totally spaced the fact I was going to be out of town and did not get a step in, so they got a short visit from me on the streets of Disney World so I could give them a quick report. And I shared with them the ballot initiatives that we, as a council, approved so that they knew to go look into those. They did not have any new items, if you look at their agenda, so they focused on some of the items that you guys had already heard about. And that is all for me.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this was a very busy week, and I had a lot of meetings and a lot of activity, and so I want to... It might take me a little bit. First of all, I want to reach out and thank all of the volunteers in our city. We had a great dinner with you weeks ago to appreciate you and honor you, and I just want to thank you for all your service to our community. This city really could not function without our volunteers. I think that's something we all agree upon, and so I just want to thank all of our volunteers. Speaking of people who have had long service to our city, congratulations to Battalion Chief Ron McHouston. He celebrated his retirement 40 years on the job. I'm in awe. I'm only at 25, so I'm like, wow, I've got a long ways to go. So very much appreciated having the opportunity to honor Battalion Chief Ron McHouston and celebrate his long time here with the city. And then we have the annual employees appreciation, so a week of appreciation. You people make this city really... You are the heart of our city. You keep us going, and you think about how we can be better and how we can move forward, and I just so appreciate your work and your dedication to our city. I know that it's hard work. I know that it can be long hours, and we appreciate you. And a special congratulations to Chris Lindsay and his department on the budget. I have to say, as someone who didn't know a lot about budgets before I came to city council, I know a lot now, and it is in large part to your team's work and how easy you have made it to learn about budgets. And actually, I find that it spills into all parts of my life, so thank you for your work. And City Manager Don Tripp talked about the Servicios de la Razas Rieses Gala that we went to, Latina's Gala that we went to, which was a great celebration. Very much enjoyed learning about that organization and their incredible work on human services and dedication to the community. And then I had two important meetings this morning. So I had two meetings simultaneously, and Counselor Smith helped me out by attending one for a little bit for me. Thank you very much for stepping in. So the first meeting we had was the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council Meeting, and I only got to attend a little bit of it because I needed to get to the next meeting, so I tried to split my time. And so, but they had a lot of public comment on the water and the surface water and concerns. And the gentleman who runs it, David Abelson, 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 talked about what has been found and how they are working to make sure things are working right. So he said there were no significant findings. But I did listen to the presentation on groundwater monitoring and on surface water monitoring. They've done a lot of work out there to help mitigate and to maintain their wells and their monitors out there. Some of the wildlife has had their opportunity to put their hoofs through it and eat some of the stuff, so it was good to hear that they were working to find better ways to do that. And then got to jump over to the rock perspectives from pilots and community members who are concerned about the economic impact. So that was... It was interesting to hear different dynamics. There was a presentation by Nick Johnson and Paul Anzlo, talking about a study that was done through Superior in Lewisville and what the reaction was to that study. And they... It basically... It's still finding all the same stuff, that it would be very hard to change the direction of this airport, and if we did change it, it might actually impact Westminster negatively. So really listening carefully, because I understand the concern of the noise, but we want to make sure that we also don't bring more harm to Westminster residents. So really listening to make sure that we are working for the good of all and paying attention to that. So very long week, lots of meetings, very exciting, and a lot of fun.
Thank you, Counselor Scully. Does anyone else have comments? Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Mayor. I was fortunate to attend, along with Counselor Vols and City Manager Tripp, the quarterly Jefferson County BCC and municipality meeting with the county commissioners. First key up on that was how the opioid settlement, one part of those settlements are going to come to municipalities and counties, and the process that is going to be put in place as far as transparency and use of that in a two-year plan that has to be submitted. Former Mayor Herb Adgeson and former mayor of Thornton, Heidi Williams, have been integral in this phase of it because they were involved prior to this in the settlement negotiations. And so they had... They even passed their time of service, and are still giving time to the residents and working on this plan moving forward. It is rather complicated. There are other settlements coming forth, and right now, there'll be regional spending on this, so the effects of opioid use can be drilled down to those most affected by region, rather than just a statewide blanket expenditure. We also had an excellent update from Kelly Barker, Jefferson County homeless update, and the number of navigators that are joining. and the number of navigators that are joining along other cities, along with Westminster, that led on this program, and then the intergovernmental affiliation where some of the smaller cities are sharing navigators. So that was great to hear how that's been working from that standpoint also. And we got an update from Jefferson Center about mental health and their contract with Jefferson County. And Kara Kunsler gave an update on that, and some of the effects of COVID has had on mental health of individuals. And then some of the positives, though, that as far as being able to reach out to people as far as telehealth and health kiosks, so that you can reach people where they are and get them, get them help as soon as possible. So that was a quick update on Jefferson County Commissioners and Municipalities Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Seymour. Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to echo my colleagues, and I can't say much more about September 11, but I wanted to pay remembrance and respect to those that were affected. It seemed to affect all of us in the nation that day. But also to thank our Westminster first responders. It's a, it's a tough job that you do every day, and I wanted to thank you for that. Also, on September 11, I attended the Historic Westminster Festival, along with Mayor Protem Demont, and I think, Mayor, you attended as well. Perfect. It was a well-attended event. It was, it's one of my favorites, and family fun, and lots of fund vendors to patron. So if you're ever having a inkling to go to Westminster Festival, that would be one that I would say to go to. It's, again, one of my favorites. I think they're done for the year, but look for it next year. So thank you.
I know we've already spoken about September 11, but it would feel remiss to not start my comments by, again, just acknowledging that this was a heavy weekend. And it was a heavy weekend for a lot of people in our community. I think due to current political issues or international relations, I think it can be triggering for a lot of families in the military. I think for our first responders, it can be triggering. And just being someone who lived through that day, it can be triggering. I know, I, I think every single one of us has that moment where we remember exactly where we were and how we felt. So I do just want to say thank you to our first responders, and thank you to our community for, as Mayor Protem mentioned, remembering how to come together the day on September 12. And let's try to remember that feeling of putting community, putting our nation first. I also had a very long week, or two weeks, since we haven't had the opportunity to report back to you. So I'm going to be incredibly brief, particularly on issues where my colleagues already attended. But I did want to, again, say thank you to our volunteers. The annual volunteer appreciation barbecue was a wonderful success this year. Martha, from our city management office, I believe, helped plan that. It was a wonderful event, an opportunity for us to say thank you, but also for volunteers to meet each other. And I think there's a lot of people in our community who enjoyed, especially after 18 months of COVID, enjoyed that almost more than the barbecue itself. I also wanted to mention that I met with Constance Schmidt, the CEO of St. Anthony North, and Dana Talarico, the St. Anthony Board Chair for the foundation. We did this to celebrate or to talk about St. Anthony's relationship to the city on the day of their 50th anniversary. So St. Anthony's North has been an important member of this community, providing healthcare, mission-driven healthcare to our community members. But they wanted to talk to me about something a little more serious, and that was the fact that their hospital is dealing with some capacity issues due to COVID. And just really wanted me to reemphasize, we need to be good neighbors to each other. They are at the point where they are going to need to start canceling elective surgeries due to capacity issues. And in fact, asked if perhaps the chief medical officer could come in and speak at one of our study sessions about the situation that they're in. I have forwarded that request on to City Manager Tripp, and he'll look and see if there is a time that we can fit them in. I recognize we have a very busy agendas in the next few weeks. That same night, I had a Denver Regional Council of Government Work Session. As many of you know, back in 2019, we had a greenhouse gas reduction set by the state legislature. And this year, hitting those targets was made into law. And so one of the sectors that is being looked at to lower their emissions is the transportation sector, which in Colorado is the largest emitter of greenhouse gas. This is very relevant for Westminster and really for the whole Front Range, because it is going to be part of the evaluation of what projects get funded or unfunded. And so this work session to really understand what the proposed rules are, how they would impact the MPOs, that is Dr. Cog, that's how we get our federal pass-through money for transportation. And this is our opportunity to weigh in on the rulemaking, to make sure we feel these are, you know, reasonable requests that are being made, and that we still are able to fund important projects while doing all we can to meet these important goals. So this is happening in real time. I believe October is going to be when these rules are approved. So you will sense a theme, because the next meeting, the reason I was not able to go to the Jefferson County BCC, is the Northwest mayors and commissioners were also having a big conversation on this item and wanting to walk through what our stance was. They had a conversation on their policy statement, wanting to make sure we're still committed to NAMs, or the North Area Mobility Study. This is important in the context of the federal infrastructure bill as it comes down, wanting to make sure that that region is speaking with one voice on which projects are priorities for our region. So it was an important conversation. They also talked about Front Range Passenger Rail. And there are opportunities to have different members on the board for that Front Range Passenger Rail, and who did we think would be potentially good candidates for that. And there was a desire from some of us in the group to get commitment, or whoever would want to be on that board, to say if we're gonna, if we're gonna have the US 36 corridor be the Front Range Passenger Rail corridor that everyone's lobbying for, that we do get the stops in each community that were promised to our voters as part of Fast Trax. And so we, as a body, did come to that commitment. So Northwest, I know this is in the weeds, but it's really important to our voters that if Front Range Passenger Rail is to go forward, that it doesn't drive by our community, but that it actually fulfills what our voters approved back in 2004. So that was that meeting. Then I had Habitat for Humanity Mayor's, Metro Mayor's Build Day, which was wonderful to meet with mayors from all across the Front Range that helped build affordable housing just off of 52nd and Pecos. So that was a really great opportunity. I joined Counselor Scully, and I believe Counselor Seymour was there earlier in the evening at Battalion Chief McHouston's retirement party. Forty years of service is a big deal. And that was service he gave this community, but it's service his family gave the community as well. And hearing all of his brothers and sisters in our fire department tell stories about him, it really brought home what a family our fire department is, and how dedicated they are to our community. So that was lovely. And then finally, I had the monthly mayor's breakfast with RTD district board members. So that is all I had. Thank you, and I apologize it was so long. Now, on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a group of routine matters to be acted on with a single motion and vote. Counsel, at this time, does any member wish to remove an item for separate discussion? Seeing none, at this time, I'll take a motion to consider the consent agenda. Counselor Scully.
I believe, oh, Mayor Protem Demont actually had it first, ma'am.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt the consent agenda, items A through C.
Counselor Scully.
I second.
There is a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote.
Mayor Protem Demont.
Yes.
Mayor Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
And Counselor Voels.
Yes.
This item passes on a six-zero vote.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is appointments and resignations. We have none tonight, so we will move on to item 10, Public Hearings and Other New Business. First item under this heading is to hold a public hearing for the 2022 proposed budget. It is now 7:37 PM. At this time, we will open the public hearing. There are now four methods available for participation in the public hearing. You may testify in person, submit written email testimony, record a voicemail to be played back during the meeting, or request to speak live via the remote meeting link through the city clerk office. At this time, I would ask the acting city clerk to please summarize the number of participants this evening and introduce our first speaker.
We have one person signed up to speak in person, and that person is Eric Clokey.
Mr. Clokey, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and counselors. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Aaron Clokey. I'm the Director of Development at Foothills Regional Housing, also known as Jefferson County Housing Authority. We own and manage three communities in the city of Westminster. Glendale, Hidden Lake Homes, and Redwood Village, all along the Sheridan Boulevard corridor. And these communities consist of 242 units, serving families and individuals between 30 and 60% of the area median income. I'm here to talk to you tonight about the proposed roadway improvement fee that is being included in your proposed 2022 budget. As providers of affordable housing, I feel as though we owe you our perspective on this proposed fee and how it impacts us. The current infrastructure fee charges $6 per water meter. Between our Westminster properties, because we pay all tenant utilities, we only have six, six water meters. Thus, we pay $432 annually for this infrastructure fee. The proposal is to charge $6 per unit. Like I stated, we have 242 units. This proposal would increase our annual fee to over $17,000 a year. The result is that our operating budgets are stretched thinner. We can manage this in a couple of different ways. Much like we have with recent water rate increases, our number one option is to raise rents. Raising rents for these properties is not just a matter of raising rent by $6 a month for every tenant. That might be easy, and I wouldn't be here tonight if it was that simple. But because these are affordable units, maximum rent supply that are dictated by the state and federal government, some tenants' rents are below these maximums. And make no mistake, we do increase rents from time to time, but our goal is to never increase rents by more than 10% a year. And with these additional fees, we may be forced to raise rents for a select few at a rate greater than 10% a year. And as I stated previously, we pay all tenant utilities at our Westminster communities. Another option is, we reconsider if and how much of our tenant utilities we cover, and if that is something we want to do for future communities in Westminster. Where we can't do these things, we simply try to absorb these costs. But the result is that we're left with less resources for the people we serve, and less resources to create more affordable units in the city. Your website states that this is a more equitable way to fund roadway improvements, maybe more even-handed approach to fund roadway improvements, but our tenants do not always equally use roadways in the way that an average resident might. While most of our tenants own and operate a vehicle, it's hard not to in Jeffco. Many of our families also bike, walk, and take public transportation. And then our senior communities, even more residents take public transportation or RTDs access a ride. I may be wrong, but it's my interpretation that much of this revenue is going towards vehicular or automobile-related infrastructure. But owning a vehicle isn't a second thought for most of us, but for our residents, owning a vehicle takes a larger portion of their household budget than you and I. And if you want this fee to be truly equitable, I would encourage you to use these funds towards all modes of transportation and provide our residents with greater transportation options. Finally, this proposal is framed as a way so that apartments share the same costs as single-family homes. But I would say that multifamily communities don't use infrastructure the same way that single-family homes do. They use it more efficiently. Westminster roads, sidewalks, and utility lines serve more people per linear foot of infrastructure near apartments than single-family subdivisions. You get more bang for your infrastructure buck with your infrastructure near our communities. And why? And that is because of density. If you want this to be truly equitable, I encourage you to consider an exemption or a discount for our affordable housing communities. That's all I have for you tonight. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions. But just thank you again for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's our last speaker.
All right. With that being our last speaker, and we don't typically ask for comments or questions from council, but because anyone want, have questions based off of the last speaker's comments for staff, that they'd like to let them know before our budget conversation next week? Mayor Protem?
Just started looking at the budget, but maybe you could at least point us to where we would find that, so that we can review items that's being discussed. Don't necessarily need that now, but maybe even tonight, or shoot us an email and I can review it. Thank you.
And then, actually, I'll just send an email. Thank you so much. And remember, we can email staff anytime with questions that we have in anticipation for the study session on our budget next week. I'd encourage all of our council members to do that. I know I personally am planning on requesting a hard copy budget, because I do like to be able to reference back and forth. I know we typically in the past had those couriered to our homes. I think probably to focus on being more sustainable, you know, they're wanting us to request them. So if anyone else wants a hard copy, please let us know. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. We're gonna, the time is 7:43? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Scully.
I just also would like to request a hard copy. Budgets are hard to read on the screen.
Correct. We didn't even get them in PDF in the packet, so we could use iAnnotate. So they would be helpful for council. Okay, any other comments? All right, seeing none. We're gonna close the public hearing at 7:44. The next item before us is item 10B, Resolution Number 34. Can I get a motion? Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 34, authorizing the assignment of $6,272,751 of the city's private activity bond allocation from the federal government for 2021 to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority for the qualified purposes set forth in the resolution, and authorize the mayor and city attorney to execute the attached required documents.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Mayor Sights.
Yes.
Yes. I'm sorry. Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Voels.
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Demont.
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-zero vote.
The next item before us is Resolution Number 35. Can I get a motion? Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 35, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Westminster and the Colorado Department of Transportation pertaining to the administration of $199,266 in federal funds, supported by a local match of $49,816 for a project total of $249,082, be Westminster Multimodal Safety Improvement Project.
Counselor Scully, or I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Demont.
Okay.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on item number, Resolution Number 35? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Voels.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demont.
Yes.
Yes.
The motion passes on a six zero vote.
Counselor Seymour, do you want to finish out this item?
Thank you. I move to authorize a payment of forty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars to the project as part of the local agency matching funds requirement.
Mayor Pro Tem Demont.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Seeing none, this is also a roll call vote.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Volz.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Demont.
Yes.
Mayor Sights.
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
The motion passes on a six zero vote.
The next item before us is item ten D. This is regarding a purchase and sale agreement. Can I get a motion? Mayor Pro Tem Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to execute the purchase and sale agreement of approximately point eight seven acres located at seventy-three seventy-one West Ninety-second Avenue for open space. The purchase price for this property, including five thousand dollars, earnest money would be two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Additional a hundred thousand dollars for remediation and restoration of the property for a total expenditure of three hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Counselor Scully.
I second.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Counselor, or Mayor Pro Tem Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Mr. Tripp and staff for bringing this forward to us. I think that I had got a phone call about that property after that building had burned down, and no sooner or later had you brought this forward to us. So I'm glad to see this, and I think it's gonna be a good addition to our open space and make that area look better.
Thank you. Counselor Volz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I want to join in and also thank staff. And this is a win-win-win. It's an opportunity for open space, which we know ninety percent or plus of our residents like and want in our city. So that's a good thing for our residents. But it's also an opportunity to clean up a dilapidated property, as Mayor Pro Tem mentioned. I'm glad to see that. And it also completes an open space corridor. So it's kind of that last piece that connects a whole group of properties. And it's an area of our city that this will really improve and make it look better. But it's also an open space acquisition. So I'm really looking forward to voting for this tonight. So thank you.
The last thing, I just want to highlight although we mentioned the price tonight of being around three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. There is an opportunity for Jefferson County Open Space to participate at around twenty-five percent. So that remains to be seen. This is as expensive as it will be for the city of Westminster, but there is opportunity for partnership. Seeing no other comments or questions, this is a roll call vote.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Volz.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Demont.
Yes.
Mayor Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
And Counselor Scully.
Yes.
The motion passes on a six zero vote.
The next item before us is First Amendment with Silva Construction. Can I get a motion? Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to execute the First Amendment with Silva Construction Inc. in the amount of three hundred thirty-eight thousand eight hundred sixty-six dollars for concrete replacement projects in 2021. This amendment brings the total authorized expenditure in 2021 for Silva Construction, Inc. from the previously approved amount of one million seven hundred twenty-three thousand one hundred thirty-four dollars to an amount not to exceed two million sixty-two thousand dollars.
Counselor Smith.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns on this item? Counselor Volz.
Yeah, I just want to clarify a few things, if I might. Are we bringing items that we're, or projects that were going to be in 2022 into 2021? Is that what I'm understanding? And is the reason for that to save money? I guess those are my two questions for this agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschbaum.
Yes, Max Kirschbaum, Public Works and Utilities. Yeah, this, it's been a long-term goal of ours to try to get our concrete program one year ahead of our paving program. It's a hindrance every year because we try to sequence construction of concrete just in time before asphalt. These carryover funds give us a great benefit to get us close to, if not completely, that one year ahead. So we're doing concrete in one year, and then the asphalt paving in that following year. A much better sequence and flow and will give us a far greater ability to schedule that asphalt work in that subsequent year.
Very good. Thank you for that answer.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Counselor Volz.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Demont.
Yes.
Mayor Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
The motion passes on a six zero vote.
The next item before us is item ten F. This is to authorize the city manager to allow a contingency on a project. Is there a motion? Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to allow an additional contingency in the amount of seventy-five thousand in 2019 Bridge Pedestrian Railing Paint Project with Thomas Industrial Coatings, Inc. to perform unplanned repairs on the Eightieth Avenue Bridge. This will bring the total authorized 2021 expenditure from the previously approved amount of one million eight hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-two cents to an amount not to exceed one million nine hundred and thirty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-two cents.
Counselor Scully.
I second.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns on this item? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Demont. Mayor Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
And Counselor Volz.
Yes.
The motion passes on a six zero vote.
The next item on the agenda is item ten G. This is a contract with HDR Engineering. Is there a motion? Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move, based on the report of the city manager, to determine that the public interest would best be served by accepting the proposal for preliminary design services and executive contract with HDR Engineering, Inc. for the Norwich Water Tanks Replacement Project in the amount of four hundred thirty-three thousand eight hundred seventy-three dollars, and authorize a contingency in the amount of forty-three thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars for a total authorized expenditure of four hundred seventy-seven thousand two hundred sixty dollars.
Counselor Volz.
I second the motion.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this? Mayor Pro Tem Demont.
I have a couple of quick questions. So in the agenda memo, it talks about how far these, that the standard life is forty years, and just how you can extend it by doing some maintenance on it, and points out how far past the typical useful lives these are. So my first question is, is there opportunity to extend life further? And is this just a common, like, how does that practice usually work in the industry as far as these types of things? Max, do you want me to bring you up, or do you want me to call on one of your staff members? Okay, thank you.
For this, this very specific issue for these steel tanks that are located, the two tanks that are located right here on the south end of the parking lot at City Hall. We had a, you'll note in the agenda memo, we had a structural analysis done several years ago. That structural analysis concluded that the roof structures for both of those tanks was inadequate and posed a risk. We've been carrying this from then till now, carrying that risk. We have extended the life, and we are at the point where even when we get heavy snowfalls in the winter, which adds a dead weight load onto those tanks, we perform those additional inspections to see if that, if those roof structures have deteriorated from corrosion any worse and are subject to a failure. Hopefully, not a catastrophic failure, but a failure. So we are past that point where these tanks should be replaced.
Okay, great. Two other questions to that. With that being said, this is, you know, the design phase. So design phase, you know, when do you actually see this being replaced?
We have the first increment of the construction funds in the twenty-one program. We have the second increment of funds in the twenty-two program. We intend to be able to execute, hopefully, depending on how design turns out, we would at least anticipate to be able to execute both of them simultaneously in twenty-two or probably a little bit beyond. One other thing that you'll note about the way we're trying to do this project is we are also, at some point during this design phase, we have the intention to come back to you to bring on the eventual construction contractor in a partnership called Construction Manager Risk. That C Mar partner will join the design engineer midway through the design process because if you recall, the concrete tank that was built and finished in 2015, it's a, it's a very intricate sequence of construction that requires a significant amount of laydown area, which we have very little of. So our hope is that by bringing on the eventual construction contractor midway through that process, we will find those opportunities to come up with the most efficient way to execute the work when we get to it, thereby controlling cost to the greatest extent.
Great. Two final questions. One, do we have other steel tanks? Or are these the last two in our?
We have a total of, I think, twelve structures. These are not the final steel. Some are, continue to be steel, like the project that we just finished in Countryside, which is a partially buried tank, is a steel tank, and it was just refurbished. The tanks that we have, that we call Wandering View at, on One Hundred and Fourth Avenue, those also are steel tanks. Eventually, it would be great to get to all of them. However, we've done enough work at Countryside and at Wandering View. We've got a fair amount of life left in them before we get to this point. It's, it's the structural concern here that is dictating the action.
Then my final question on the, on the concrete ones, since that seems to be the preferred. What's the useful life on those before you're refurbishing?
If, if you ask the builder of these tanks that we've used successfully now twice with great success, they're one of the premier builders in the country, in fact, they would tell you you're gonna get a hundred years out of that tank.
Thank you for your answer. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there any other questions for Director Kirschbaum? Thank you. Seeing no other questions, this is a roll call vote.
Mayor Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Volz.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Demont. Motion passes on a six zero vote.
The next item on the agenda is item ten H. This is a sole-source contract with Denali. Is there a motion? Mayor Pro Tem Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I move, based on the recommendation from the city manager, to determine the public interest will be best served by authorizing the city manager to execute a sole-source contract with, how do you pronounce that?
Denali.
Denali Water Solutions LLC for cleaning, hauling, and disposing of water, wastewater treatment, process-related waste materials from the city's treatment facilities for 2021 in the amount not to exceed a hundred and twenty-three thousand seven hundred dollars.
Counselor Scully.
I second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Counselor Volz.
I just want to confirm. So this is, again, a sole-source contract. And I want to confirm, is that because there's really just one vendor in our area that's really capable of doing this work in both of our facilities?
Last, the director. Come up, please.
Sorry, Mr. Kirschbaum, you're up and down a lot. I apologize for that.
There is one vendor that can do all of this scope of work at both of our plants, which, which includes, you'll, you'll notice, one thing that we've done a little different this year is combine the wastewater treatment facility work together with the water treatment facility work, again, to try to get a better economy from this work. They also will do a, an additional phase of work there, which, which is a periodic cleaning of a digester facility. When you put all of these pieces together, yes, they are. We have, we also have a lengthy history with them, and we have great confidence in them.
Okay, thank you for that answer. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Mayor Sights?
Yes.
Motion passes on a 6-0 vote. That was the last item before us for the regular Westminster City Council meeting. We do have two post-meeting briefings after this meeting. One will be the presentation from the presiding municipal court judge, and the next is a discussion regarding redistricting and how it's impacting Westminster. Thank you all so much for joining us. Please feel free to stick around for the post-meeting. We are going to take a brief 10-minute break between the two, but it is 8:02.
Can I ask you a question?
Oh, I am so sorry, Mayor Protem.
That's all right. I just want to ask because I'm not sure who's sticking around for the next items. There was an information-only item on the post-briefing around the rodeo market. I'm just curious because part of that development or deal was maintenance on that property that needs to be done, whether or not that became a roof hub or anything else. So I just wanted to find out, and if you don't have an answer tonight, you need to get back to us, that's fine. But I just want to see if we are going to still do the maintenance that needs to be done on the roof and such. My preference would be to do that, but if you could bring that back to us or get back to us, that would be great. Break that down. Great. I appreciate it.
Counselor Seymour, you also had a comment. Okay, did not. Okay. Well, it is now 8:03. We are adjourned. All right, everyone. It is 8:13, and we are going to reconvene for our Westminster post-meeting briefing. The first item is going to be the presentation of the presiding municipal court judge's annual report. Judge Lon Time, please take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a privilege to be here this evening, so I first want to thank you, Mayor, and Mayor Protem. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem and members of city council. It's a privilege to be here tonight to give an overview of all of that we've accomplished at the court over the past year. I would like to start again by thanking you for all of your support of our municipal court, including making sure that we had the resources that were necessary to get through this past year, all the challenges that it posed. I would also like to take an opportunity to thank city manager Tripp and city attorney Frankel for all of their assistance that they gave to the court as we had these really unprecedented times, and we're developing new procedures over the past 12 months. I'd also like to thank the print shop, I Can't Take Credit, for the bound annual report. They did fantastic work. And also to our court leadership team, Candace Atkinson, our court administrator, Debbie Buldine, our deputy court administrator, Brian Poden class, our probation supervisor, as well as Matthew Boko, our general services director, for all that they've done over the past year to make it possible to run the court and their assistance for all of our staff. ELT as well. It's been an honor to be a participant in ELT since I've joined the court. I'm thankful for all their support and all of the different departments that have come together over the past year to help the court in its mission. I will say our court is in a very strong place. We have a team that is motivated and dedicated to our mission statement. They bring new energy to their roles each and every day. Our doors are open to the public. We're inviting our citizens in, back into our courthouse to resolve their matters. We're pursuing goals that will ensure our community remains a safe and welcoming place to live, work, and recreate. We are part of a broader city organization that came together in inspiring ways over the past year to provide uninterrupted service during unprecedented times. We could go to slide two, thank you. The written report dives into more detail about what we've done over the past year, my professional activities, statistics about the past year. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you may have about any of those topics. But given how our past year really required us to double our focus on our mission statement, I thought I would frame the presentation today in terms of our spirit values and discuss some of the many successes we've had as a court in pursuit of these values. I think maybe if you could go back to slide three. So service, thank you. Service starts with our team. And that includes our court clerks, our marshals, our court security, probation, and our leadership team. This photo was taken last week at our court annual employee appreciation launch. Unfortunately, we weren't able to bring everybody together that day, but I think it gives a picture of everyone that's working hard to make our court function. If we could go to slide four. You'd see from the numbers in the report, the impact that COVID had initially on our numbers. But nonetheless, since January, we've handled 178 domestic violence dispositions, or I should say 178 dispositions that were reported to CBI. That's 178 records that are now visible to law enforcement and courts across the country. And that was a new initiative this year. Those can be used by courts to help set appropriate bonds, to impose appropriate sentences, and to ensure that victims are being kept safe. The probation department has provided 180 RASP vouchers, a rehabilitation assistance and support program vouchers, to help indigent individuals pay for domestic violence, mental health, and substance abuse treatment that they need in order to return to society as healthy and law-abiding members. There are currently 456 individuals on probation, 593 people being represented by our public defenders. And after going almost a year without having people in person at our courthouse, we've welcomed nearly 1,000 individuals since reopening our doors in June. We've processed 2,690 cases and closed 3,533. I think a number really worth reflecting on is that we have heard or docketed 4,820 individuals. The majority of these, of course, were worked from, posed to the public for the majority of the last year, and a testament to the work that the court team did to ensure that the community had access to justice during the global pandemic. Next slide, please. And while statistics help guide us in our objective benchmarks, we strive to improve each citizen's experience in our court each day. To that end, we've taken several steps over the past year, including improving our restitution timeframe by streamlining the kind of payments that the court accepts. Victims can now receive their funds within a week or two after the defendant makes their payment. We've enhanced our website to include COVID updates and procedures, virtual appearance information, video advisals, made it easier to navigate for individuals to resolve their traffic tickets. We've expanded our payment system to allow partial payments for people that aren't able to complete their payments all at once. And we started using a soft phone software system, which is a pretty neat program that allows clerks who are working at home to answer incoming calls to the court that reduces wait times, ensures that callers are getting a live person online rather than cycling to a phone tree. As a municipal court, we see a lot of pro se defendants, individuals that don't have or can't afford an attorney to represent them. And then this past year, especially during COVID, we instituted new policies to include accepting emailed motions for individuals that don't have access to fax stamps, the ability to print out paper and submit a written motion. We also have expanded our virtual appearances, so those that are out of state are unable to travel due to health or disability and attend to a court meeting. That's something that we've continued on even after opening our doors back up to the public. We recorded video advisals so that individuals can understand their rights and have time to review them before court. And those are both in English and Spanish and are accessible through the website. The next slide, please. While our overriding mission is to serve our community, this past year, we also took steps to improve the service we offer to our city and department stakeholders. Our animal management officers in foothills were supporting a fast-track program so that if an animal is impounded as part of a criminal investigation, the defendant can be seen within a day or two. This reduces the potential costs and burden on foothills and shelter for caring for that animal, reduces the costs that the defendant may ultimately be responsible for, and helps ensure the proper disposition of the animal in a timely manner. With our police department, we're working towards paperless summons that will reduce paperwork and allow for timely updates to the summons. Just recently, we changed some procedures around our juvenile diversion process and working with the police department, seamlessly able to update the summons almost instantaneously. So now these juveniles can take advantage of the new program that we instituted. Before that, we printed summons. We'd have to wait for the print shop. There'd be a large order, and it was a much more burdensome process. Also think it's very important to be accessible to our city stakeholders. Personally, I meet with ELT weekly to coordinate larger city initiatives. I serve our local court stakeholders by leading the point team every week or every other week, which is made up of lead probation officer, lead public defender, lead prosecutor, and other important stakeholders in the court to proactively identify and resolve concerns and make progress towards our strategic goals. Go to the next slide, please. So the accomplishments of the past year really have their roots in the pride that the court team has for the work that they do. And this was expressed, I think, very well by Vanessa Hamilton, who's our lead court clerk. And she stated, "I've worked for Westminster Municipal Court for over 16 years. I've always valued being a part of the judicial process, delivering equitable, fair, and impartial justice. Integrity must be the cornerstone of how we conduct ourselves in both the court and our personal lives. Maintaining and protecting the judicial process ensures that fundamental rights are preserved for everyone. I have appreciated the experiences I have gained over these last 16 years and the wonderful court staff I have had the privilege to work with as well. We are all part of an amazing team that puts forth the very best we have to offer. And, I believe, we deliver the service to our citizens that we are proud of." The next slide, please. As the presiding judge, I believe that it's important to demonstrate the pride in who we are at the court by taking a leadership role on the issues impacting our court and our community. And to that end, over the past year, I've been an active board member of the Colorado Municipal Judges Association and a member of their legislative committee. I'm also CMJA's representative with the Colorado Bar Association Judicial Liaison Committee. I also serve as the judicial representative for the North Metro Juvenile Diversion Board. This involvement helps ensure that Westminster has a strong voice on issues involving our court, but also promotes our reputation as a model for municipal courts in the state. For us to do our best work and work that we can be proud of, we need to be deeply involved in the important conversations on policy that impact our court and our community. In the last several months, I testified on Senate Bill 62 and 273 and provided input to city council. And working closely with our Colorado Municipal Judges Association's legislative team, I'm working on other bills that have serious implications for community safety going forward. As well, working through the North Metro Juvenile Diversion Board, I've helped coordinate with the LINK and the JAG to improve services for juvenile offenders, including the use now of evidence-based assessment as part of our diversion program. I'm working with our city's co-responders and homeless navigators to collaborate on court initiatives of mutual interest going forward, to include things like a homeless docket for individuals that are experiencing homelessness and otherwise have difficulty getting to court. Finally, I believe that pride means engaging in continuous improvement. And to that end, in the past 12 months, I've attended CMJA's annual conference and sought out implicit bias training through the National Center for City Courts. I've also completed leadership training through the city. Next slide, please. One definition of integrity is doing the right thing even when it isn't easy. And a couple of recent examples from our probation department really epitomize our court's work to seek the right outcome in our community. So I'd like to describe a couple of stories for council. This year, a client was placed on probation, so, excuse me, a client was placed on probation in September of 2018, Ryan Poden class. in September of 2018 with Ryan Hogan class, our lead probation officer, the supervisor, for a battery charge against the defendant's cousin while intoxicated. At the onset of his probation, he was living in a motel and drinking 12 to 24 beers a day, more during Broncos games. He was unemployed and being supported by his mother and grandmother, who were afraid not to purchase him alcohol for fear that he would start with trauma. The client was always engaged with probation, caring for his appointments and communicating with his probation officer, but continued to struggle with his sobriety. He maintained some part-time jobs here and there, but unfortunately, all that really allowed him to do was maintain his level of drinking. Eventually, his drinking led to an unhealthy relationship that involved his girlfriend, and ultimately both of them being charged with domestic violence. But probation continued to work with him, seeing the potential for his success. This individual ultimately had his probation revoked and reinstated three times. At any one of those times, probation could have thrown up their hands and said, "That's it," and requested a lengthy jail sentence from the court. But their experience and integrity told them there was more work to be done. For this individual, the third time was the charm. He found employment stability, and with counseling and probation's guidance, he changed his outlook and established long-term sobriety. He was able to successfully complete probation in July 2021 and is very happy to be employed as an assistant manager at a restaurant. His reestablished family connections lost because of his drinking, is optimistic about his future and what it holds as a law-abiding member of the community. As a court, some of our greatest successes come when we're able to ensure a defendant gains a sense of integrity and lets that drive decision-making going forward. We'll go to the next slide, please. Responsibility takes many forms in our court. In the past year, the court has demonstrated our responsibility to victims by developing virtual appearances for victims post-COVID to reduce the re-trauma that occurs through repeated court appearances. We focused on our domestic violence fast track program and ensured those matters are handled timely, and we've returned over $13,000 in restitution to victims to date. We've also shown responsibility to defendants. We've ensured due process was respected through COVID and respected speedy trial rights, beginning jury trials and contested hearings as soon as it was safe to do so. We also ensured defendants were responsible to the community, and I think our work is well summed up by the statement of one defendant after completing his domestic violence treatment and sentence. In his final report, he wrote, "I take full responsibility and accept all punishments and repercussions that I have earned due to my domestic violence cases. After a long two years of fighting with myself and playing victim, I can honestly say that I am guilty and deserve all the consequences given to me. I am not the victim of unjust rule, but I am a human who made a mistake. At the time of the incident, I was in a state of mind of carelessness, selfishness, and control. I did not care about anybody but myself and lived my life like I was above the law and the rules and not a fighter. I was wrong. Finally, taking treatment in domestic violence groups seriously these last few months have been an eye-opener. It made me come to the realization that I must and will change my way of thinking in handling certain decisions." This was a successful outcome. However, not every defendant's conduct or level of accountability warrants a probation sentence. In those cases, responsibility can often mean punitive sanction. Those are an important tool to hold defendants responsible and accountable while ensuring victims' community safety. And finally, we've been responsible to the community. In the past year, we held thousands of virtual hearings to maintain the public's access to justice. When it was time to reopen, we took incredible measures to ensure we could be so safe, including completing full jury trial run-throughs, installing a new needlepoint bipolar HVAC system to help clear the air. We installed Plexiglas, conducted COVID screenings, and drafted detailed written procedures with partners. Go to the next slide, please. We're also proud of many projects that we've been able to move forward despite the challenges of the past year, who include the domestic violence case dispositions that I mentioned earlier, our text reminder system to ensure that individuals make their court dates and receive reminders ahead of time to reduce failures to appear and warrants. We've increased our use of virtual court appearances, and we're working to transition to a paperless office to make us more efficient and more streamlined for the police department. We started conducting split jury board, where we could separate the jurors into two separate rooms and conduct essentially through CCTV, conduct jury selection, so that we didn't overpopulate our courtroom when we were worried more so about social distancing. We're also recommitting ourselves to our recidivism reduction projects, such as the Wellness Court, the Homeless Docket, and our Juvenile Diversion Board. Next slide, please. Over the past year, each member of the court displayed incredible teamwork. And just a few examples included clerks working with a partner on the other team while we were in split teams to ensure that work was completed. The clerks delivered files to each other at home after work to make sure that the next day went smoothly. And everyone had to learn duties of other staff to ensure that our service to the public was minimally disruptive. Frankly, the reason we were able to handle over 4,000 hearings since January is because of the immense effort put in by our incredible team of clerks and prosecutors. Next slide, please. While 2021 provided many opportunities to show our spirit values, and we expect the same to be true next year, we have many things still on tap. In terms of recruitment, we're working right now to recruit our associate judge. We've been in the process of recruiting Pro Tems in a garden of their own. I will continue my leadership role in the CMJA, the Metro Juvenile Diversion Board, and the Colorado Bar Association. And we are already seeing new legislation on the horizon in regard to bond reform, sentencing, outstanding judgment warrants, and each of these will require study and input. I'm committed to continuing the collaboration with other municipalities in the state on issues such as shared data between municipal courts, wider access to veterans' court services, and pretrial supervision. I'm excited to continue working on national projects, such as helping the National Association of Municipal Courts grow and connect courts across the country to help increase the understanding of the important work that municipal courts do. In this next year, I'm also focused on evaluating our court's current facility needs and planning for the future. I'm dedicated to the success of our Wellness Court, to working closely with prostate departments and the city council for the benefit of our community in this year. Thank you very much for your time this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Ed. Are there any comments or questions for my colleagues for the judge, Mayor Pro Tem Demont?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Judge Longtime, for showing up tonight, for your presentation and your work over the last year. I appreciate all the work that is done to get people out of the cycle in our court system. I think that's the best case scenario is for people to be better behaving citizens, I guess is the best way to put it. But with that being said, I want to share an experience with you and kind of lead into what I'm hoping we can see some collaboration between the court, city manager, and police department, city attorney's office. I was in a Home Depot in our city, say, about a month and a half ago. And what I witnessed was an individual filling a shopping cart full of multiple of the same high-priced lawn tools. Thought that was weird, kind of had a feeling like, hmm, this doesn't look good. Went about my business, saw the same individual on the other end of the store filling another fresh cart full of power tools. When we left, we saw him parked in a U-Haul, and he was loading that with employees taking pictures, no regard, didn't care they were taking pictures, loading it up to the point where you could not see inside the U-Haul truck because he had so many power tools in there. I imagine this is probably above the limit that would end in the municipal court. But the concern is that you have, and you kind of alluded to it, there are individuals who we can help that, you know, the punitive path isn't the right path, and we can get them on a better path with giving them some options, be it probation or the different tools that you have. But the reason I bring that up is we have entered this this point in my mind and culture where some people just feel like the law doesn't apply anymore, and we no longer have to listen to authority. And I think that that is an unsafe place for our community. And so the reason I wanted to bring it up tonight was to really just get a discussion started around what can we do as a council to help support you keeping the community safe, be it destruction of property with graffiti, be it theft. You know, and I talked to the the city attorney a little bit about a desire to address some of these things, as well as have him talk to the police department and the officers to see, you know, what tools could they get from us in order to, you know, make the community safer. So with that, that's kind of what I'm hoping that maybe you could address some of that and what you've seen, the opportunities going into 2021 where council can support you in making a safer Westminster.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I appreciate that question. And I think your observation summarized what a lot of people are experiencing. And that was a big topic this past legislative cycle, Senate Bill 62 and 273, which were mostly in regard to pretrial reform. But there were a lot of concerns raised in regard to those bills about whether or not it was opening the door to individuals feeling that they would not be held accountable and encouraging type of cycles of criminality that resulted in what we are witnessing. I think over the course of the next year, from my part, I intend to be involved in CMJA's legislative committee on keeping tabs and evaluating the new laws and bills that are coming out that could impact the community and providing the court's input to city council for your decision on what angle or perspective city council is going to take on that legislation. In terms of the the individual cases and the tools that are needed, I think it's important that courts are able to maintain their discretion in sentencing, just for the reason that you mentioned. In our court, our limit on theft is up to $500 to $200. Our sentencing range is up to 364 days in jail and/or up to a $2500 fine. And I think it's important both of them are thinking about what future legislation may be coming down. I think it's important to think about maintaining judicial discretion because every case is different. You'll have the individual that probation can work with and can have that successful outcome, and there's going to be other individuals where that's simply not the case, and there's we have punitive sanctions for just that purpose. I think there's many conversations as well that can happen with the police department and resources and support that they need and the ability to conduct their investigations and their work. But from strictly a court perspective, I think that doing what we can to maintain judicial discretion is going to be critical.
Great, I appreciate that answer. I think that part of that in my mind is allowing you to have the discretion and to see an individual and say, this person shouldn't be stuck here because they don't have the money to pay bond. And I think that that's where a municipal court can be very flexible and be able to look at each case. So, and I think that's important for the public to understand in my mind why some of that is important. So I would just put across to you, if there's ever a thing in our local ordinance that you think needs to be addressed, please make sure that you let the council know so that we can help, you know, better the community. I appreciate your work in this report tonight.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Judge Longtime. This was a really good presentation. It was very, I appreciated the simplicity because it helped me to understand the court system a little better, and I really appreciated that. You said, there was a point where you said that the victims received their funds after the defendants pay it, and you've made that a quicker process. And I really appreciate that, but I was wondering, what is the average length of time that it takes a defendant to make the payment, and what are we doing on that end?
So I appreciate that question. Counselor Scully, I don't have a, in terms of the specific timeframe for you, I can certainly work on that for you. I can tell you that goals are somewhat limited when it comes to enforcing restitution. One mechanism that we have and that we've started utilizing more recently is when one of our cases closes, we send the named victim a civil judgment letter that allows them to go to county or district. They can file for restitution as civil debt as well and take advantage of the different resources that are available in the state statutes to receive those funds. In terms of holding someone's, so to speak, feet to the buyer to pay the restitution, it's fairly limited. It could be that it's a term of deferred judgment, and so the deferred judgment is not being successful. It could be a failure to comply with probation. But even then, we have to be cognizant of individuals that can't be penalized or given punitive sanctions. Very few exceptions if the failure to pay a civil judgment can be denied. So I can look into seeing if we can get those numbers in terms of averages. The high one of the strongest tools we have is that mechanism to allow victims to recover through the tools of accountability.
Okay. Thank you for that answer. I also really appreciated your consciousness and awareness of language barriers and accessibility. And I was curious, how does the court, you talked about a bilingual application of some nature. I was barely holding on to it, you know, I was trying to understand it. But I was curious, how do we, how do we help, do we have like a bilingual day, or do we have people hired in the court that are bilingual? Do we, do we do translation for residents who may need translation? How do, how do we work with inclusivity?
So we have several resources to us at the court. You, we are in the process of expanding our documents and making them more bilingual. We have members of the court staff that are bilingual, Spanish and English. We have access to two different types of interpreter services. We have in-person interpreters that we're able to bring into the courtroom with a wide range of languages for hearings where we know someone who's going to be a language barrier. We also have access to, even the name of the systems change, but essentially the language line and service, where the court clerk, real time, can call up the service, say we have an individual that speaks a particular language, and it'll come up over, the interpreter will come up over the court audio system to conduct the hearing with interpreter service that way. We also have access to case study.
I was just going to ask that, so I appreciate you saying that. Okay. Thank you very much.
Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Judge Longtime, it's been quite a year, and I appreciate you being here. I want, I want to comment on a couple of things that I heat in on your report, and I find it's critical too for ELT and for this council is how you thrust yourself into the legislative process this year. And having been part of that and this council's opposition to Senate Bill 62 and then its next version, 273, I found your leadership in that, along with members of the Police Department Command Staff, was instrumental in getting our local voice out and talking about how it's important that the safety of our residents is critical to all of us. So I appreciate that, especially this year as you were moving from associate to interim and then taking the presiding position. So it was quite a year from that standpoint. I also want to compliment you on the fact of the, I guess, the business transition of the court as far as hearing soft phones, text, text message reminders, and then the paperless. It's, it's the world that we all live in right now, and so I think the court is going to find it that that's going to be, make them much more accessible for staff too. And it's always nice to have, be able to put your fingers on documents wherever you may be. So congratulations on your entire staff. I know that takes the entire team. And having witnessed several of the virtual hearings, quite impressed with the process and is very impressed with the fact that that justice was still served moving forward. And do you see that in the future? You make a mention in it here, but you see that as a possibility in the future because you key on the fact is that, you know, appearing before Because you key on the fact is that, you know, appearing before the court is an important process of legal process. But do you see a place for that in the future?
Absolutely. I think there's things that just get lost when there is a more complex hearing being done over video, whether it's a citizen demeanor, facial expressions, violence, things like that. I think the majority of those will remain being in person, jury trials, court trials, more complicated intensive hearings. But when we're talking about efficiencies that we can build into the system, there's definitely a place to continue virtual hearings, where there might be a stipulated continuance between parties. Is it worth the time spent and energy in having everyone come into court when it's a simple, three-minute video conference call? So I think there's definitely benefits to virtual hearings that'll continue into the future. I mentioned victims of domestic violence that are able to hear outside and participate virtually rather than need to come back into court and face the re-trauma that occurred there. And we are, we're still learning, to be completely honest, about what the future is going to look like with this new technology that we've been pressed into. And that's something that I'm very proud about with our team is the willingness to really engage, think these questions through rather than just go back to the way things work. We're trying to be thoughtful about how we move forward. The continuation of virtual hearings is a good piece of that.
Thank you. And then just one, you touched on the process of finding a new associate justice. How was that process going?
We have completed the first round of phone virtual screens, and we're moving into actually this Wednesday will be our first round of in-person interviews. The final round of interviews is scheduled at noon.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Next, we have Counselor Vols.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Judge Longtime. Thanks for being here and great report. I'm really impressed you hit the ground running, so, and some tough circumstances. So thank you. I have a few comments and then a few questions. First, I want to thank you for being part of our Civics Academy. It was our first year, and we got feedback that you were really good. So people liked your presentation, so good job. And then also working with our homeless navigator. I think that's the world we're going to be living in for quite a while. So the fact you're having a homeless docket and looking at that, no other courts have been doing that, so I would encourage you to continue along those lines. I think that's really important, and I, I'm impressed that it's on here and you've already started looking into that. So kind of keep going that way. I really like it a lot. And then also, I think Counselor Seymour, a lot of my colleagues have already mentioned a lot of things, but I will re-mention them. Text reminders, that use of innovation and technology throughout the report is, to me, is impressive. So thank you for that. And then a couple of questions I have. In the future, can we have kind of a nutshell, kind of a, what's going on with juvenile diversion? Are the numbers, is it working? Is it going in the right direction? Is it positive? Why is it positive? Maybe just a little bit of an analysis. I know we've got it in here, but maybe not today, but sometime in the future. Could you include us a little bit more about that? Why we, why we're doing it? Why we want to do it? The numbers involved? Absolutely. Thank you. And I'm a little concerned about recruitment of our pro temp judges. Are we going to have any trouble with that? Are we doing the right thing? Or do we need to, is there something we can do to help you with that? We've got a lot of folks retiring. We've got some folks being appointed and moving on. But right now, it seems like there's a lot of issues with having, recruiting and having the right people in the right places. Are we okay with judge, the judge pro temp less? And how will that be in the future? Are we, are we going to be able to get the judges we need for the courts?
Thank you, Counselor, for that question. I think the answer is yes. We, during COVID, we did lose some pro temps to retirement. Others renewed job opportunities. In some ways, there was a little bit of a perfect storm in the timing that all these individuals were not. That being said, through the recruitment process with the great help of our Human Resources Department, of course, we were able to onboard, in the process of onboard, I think some very quality, relieved judges that will really be impactful in our ability to, for myself, to attend some of the other organization meetings that I think are worth for our court and to give backup to the associate judge once they're on board. So I think we are going to be able to do this.
Good. All right. Thank you for your answer and a good report. Thanks for being here and thanks for hitting the ground running. Thank you.
At this point, I don't see any other questions from my colleagues, so I just have a few for you, if you don't mind. First off, I just, a comment, thank you for this presentation tonight. I recognize that you are new as officially you are our municipal court judge, but you have been doing the job for the last nine months. And that was very difficult circumstance, and you did it well. So thank you for your leadership and your partnership with both the court staff and the ELT during that time. I wanted to ask you a few questions. Jail bed space, COVID-19, you know, orders to try to make sure we had safe jails for both the people that were being detained as well as those working in the jails, I think was important. But there has been, you know, an increase in the feeling in the community of, of safety issues. I wanted to see in your courthouse recognizing, you know, these are lower level offenses typically other than our fast track TV. Have you seen a situation with quite a few failures to appear? Situations that you feel might have been magnified by these rules?
Thank you, Mayor. And I, yes, is the answer. We have seen, and unfortunately, and this was some of what was discussed during 62 and 273, we have seen this cycle of individuals that are contacted, written the summons, fail to appear, and then receive another summons or another summons. And there's concern that without the ability to intervene and break that cycle, people are finding themselves in worse trouble than otherwise. I know in our court, and I need to, I'm going to give estimates, I can't remember the exact number, but there was an individual that I'm aware of that had upwards of 20 outstanding warrants, but they were not able to be placed in custody given the status of COVID restrictions and things of that nature. So that is certainly a concern at the court. And I know other judges share that concern because we put a lot of thought and a lot of effort into tailoring our bonds in a way that is going to ensure that they appear and protect the community. And we're in a situation that was really expanded because of COVID where the court's orders don't always carry weight because of restrictions that are out of our control. We certainly see that with the court. I know there is frustration around that, and I certainly understand that frustration. We try to do the best we can with the tools that we have available. I will say, things have changed during the most significant and highest levels of COVID. The restrictions on what the jails were speaking in were even more restrained than they are now. They've expanded. I have one of those examples in the packet. And the hope is that they will continue to expand. The jails have been following the mandates, the jail orders. So if someone is sentenced to jail, the jails are taking and holding those individuals. It's the individuals that are in warrants status or particularly non-domestic violence offenses, thefts, things of that nature that are not being held by the, preceded by the jails.
So once you have them in court, once they, they do appear, you are able to take into consideration and use your discernment if there's been a series of failures to appear prior to that?
If someone, what we're experiencing is, well, two, two answers to that question. First is like, when someone is physically in court and it's a time of sentencing, we can take the facts and circumstances into consideration. The issue is getting that person back into the court. Here, as you mentioned, if someone fails to appear, the court can issue a bench one. But by and large, unless it has a high bond amount on it, Words and Victims Rights Act crime, the jails aren't necessarily going on that. They want to give the court the opportunity to have that conversation and make those interrelations down the road.
Do you contemplate, now that we have a vaccine, that has been FDA through, do you think that we will see the jails, you know, the sheriffs, there being an opening of jail beds and some of those COVID-19 restrictions waning to allow, I guess, beyond the victims' rights cases, more detention for appropriate cases?
That would be my view, is that there would be loosening up of those. It's, it's difficult because I know that the sheriffs have other considerations as well that I am not privy to, or able really to speak and tell them of in terms of challenges that they're facing as well. So I don't mean to say that the jails or the sheriffs are means haphazardly, they have very thoughtful reasons for the policies that they have. My hope would be that, yes, as we open up more and concerns around COVID decrease, that more warrants to courts, particularly municipal courts, will result in individuals being held so that they can appear to the court if they've been not doing so voluntarily.
Thank you. I appreciate you answering those questions. I think my colleagues will agree. Public safety, you know, is, is an issue that's really on a lot of our residents' minds right now, concern over property crimes as well. And, and it's causing a little bit of worry and stress, I would say, in the community. This council has been very strong about wanting to support moves that, that enhance justice. So whether that's figuring out if someone is a candidate for wellness court or diversion, or if someone needs to be held accountable, you know, justice does not mean not holding people accountable. It's figuring out how to most appropriately and equitably make sure that we're having the appropriate penalty. And so I really have to say I appreciate your work in that area, and I feel it's very balanced perspective that puts the community first and, and really is holistic in the way you evaluate it. So I have no other questions for you tonight, but this has been very helpful, and we look forward to the next phase. All right. Thank you, Judge Longtime. So the next item tonight for our post-meeting agenda is just an open city council discussion of potential concerns or opportunities. Maybe there's not concerns, but just a conversation around the Colorado Redistricting Commission draft maps. And I don't know if everyone saw just today, a new map came out, and it came out at 2:00. So I doubt even our staff members have had an opportunity to look at it and analyze it, let alone each member of council. But I, full disclosure, I had kind of asked for us to have an opportunity to discuss this. I'm presuming that you all, just like me, have been getting comments and concerns from our residents and wondering if we're going to be voicing our opinion as a body or if folks are planning on doing it individually. So I just wanted to launch off on a conversation here. Change is, you know, sometimes scary and uncomfortable. It doesn't necessarily make it bad. My goal in having this conversation is wanting to make sure Westminster is still well represented at both the state, our House and our state senate and in our congressional district. And so wanted to see if anyone had thoughts on this. I'm happy to share mine. Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, yes. And the new boundaries, I barely had a chance to look at them and compare them to the previous ones, but it, the commission's first maps, it was interesting because they were charged with, with keeping communities of interest together and blindly so did that with the first maps. It is interesting because it's changed in, from a political standpoint, since these are partisan elections, is cutting across county lines. And so just trying to wrap my head around how that's going to work from that standpoint, but also looking at how we're able to then, though, keep Westminster together. And it looked like the map that came out of two, if I read it correctly, still did that for Senate District 19. So there's, there's an advantage to that. The disadvantage is we haven't always had excellent working relationship with our legislative community, and sometimes it's better to have more voices than less. So when we cut across different lines and have several senators that tap into Westminster, I see that as an advantage also.
Counselor Scully?
So I, I haven't seen the latest map, so I don't know what changed today. But I believe in keeping like-minded, with like-minded. I would like to see Jeffco stay as one county, and I would like to see, I don't have any issues with the state senate 19. I didn't see any problems with that. And it looks like that we may be flipping 29 and 27, or at least the representatives. So I was okay with that. But I, I am concerned about, Jeffco already has a hard time in Westminster because we aren't typically connected with the rest of the county as we should be, and sometimes that section also gets disconnected from the city. So I feel like dividing Jeffco would be really devastating still.
So I don't know if staff emailed out today. I had know, I had talked about it. We may have all an email that has a link that allows you to click. But if you look, 19 actually no longer has most of Westminster. It has just a very small sliver that is south of Stanley Lake. We have now, we're in 23 in the interactive map. And then as far as, look, on the Adams County side, it appears the Adams County side, perhaps I'm reading this wrong, my husband will tell you, I'm not always the best with a map. So I think we're in, is it 24, if I'm reading this correctly? On the Adams County side, we would be connected. This is kind of a difficult conversation to have tonight because the map was just released tonight, but it, but we're kind of a slivered up patchwork, and this is my concern. When we have really teeny pieces of our city in someone's map, right? That we're just a very small portion of who they represent, do we have the full weight that we need? We just had a conversation about how important the legislative session is to the interest of our residents. Don't we want to make sure we have a large enough voice to be heard? And so that, that is a little bit of my concern. I have not even looked at the state rep map yet from this, but I just, I don't know that we need to weigh in. I just wanted to kind of, I'm getting emails from residents asking if we are, and kind of expecting us to, because this is a big issue. So I just wanted to see your thoughts on it. Counselor Seymour?
Madam Mayor, I do stand corrected, and I apologize. You were reading the map exactly correctly. So, yeah, I'm now looking at the Senate map for the Denver Metro District as far as 23 does dice us up a bit. So my apologies.
No, that's no problem. This is, this is a complicated issue, right? And this is the reason that we're asking our residents to have a commission to help us if we, if they decide to do words in districts, because representation matters. And making sure, I, my understanding was the first maps actually didn't take in communities of interest, but were really more demographic driven. And these second maps are more looking at community of interest. And so this is why I thought it might be worthwhile for us to have a conversation, you know, on all maps, how do we, how do we kind of bundle communities of interest within Westminster? You know, and one obvious thing is dividing line with, with counties, right? Because you have a county that is de-brused versus a county that's not de-brused. You have different school districts, right? You have different pressures that the community members on there are feeling. And so it's And so it's, you know, who are their representatives also is another way to look at it. They're school board members, so they're trying to all advocate in the same direction and understand those very localized policy issues that may come forward at the state level. You know, the congressional level, similarly, do we see ourselves more similar to Weld County? Or do we see ourselves more similar to Jefferson County, you know, on the Adams County side? So these are, I don't have answers in coming here with questions for us to contemplate and maybe come together as a group to see if we have similar opinions or if we have divergent opinions. Assistant City Manager Lindsay, would you like to weigh in?
So I apologize. The maps is new, and about 5:00, one of my staff pointed out to me the link that's on that webpage that says "city splits." And if you click on that, it's going to look about like this. And if I do my math correctly.
City splits?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I'm clicking.
If I do my math.
Is it on the senate or the house?
I'm looking at the senate one because you were just discussing the senate.
Okay, okay.
And splitting up the city. So they have, all right, if you scroll down to page 21, at least, that's in my, that's in my printout. Thank you, Teresa.
Fast analysis from the Policy and Budget Department.
So District 23, if I do my math correctly, contains about 60,000 Westminster residents. That's in the proposed 91321, District 23. District 24 would have 56,000 Westminster residents. More than 24 would all be in Adams County. So it's fairly well-balanced between, between either district. There's 14,000, 15,000 residents of Adams County that are in Westminster in 23. There are 45 in Jefferson County.
The map made it appear, and maybe I'm misreading it, that there is a whole portion of Westminster that was in 19, yet a different district. So everything south of Stanley Lake from the map, and I'm seeing it's not in this spreadsheet, but like 72nd and Otis is Westminster, and from the interactive map, that is listed as being in 19, which is a completely, so a portion, there would be three, there would be three house districts, I guess, is what I'm saying. And I recognize it's not in that spreadsheet, but if you do look at that interactive map portion. Am I reading this right, Counselor Seymour? Am I?
No, I think you're correct on the split between 23 and 19 because Wadsworth dissects that, and it would take out those south of Stanley Lake.
And perhaps the redistricting commission, like some of our residents think, that's Arbada because their post office box, their postal code says Arbada, but it's in fact Westminster, as anyone on council would know, because we really are careful on that. So I'm wondering if the redistricting, they're going by the postal code and the city names. Do you know what I'm saying? Instead of the, like, where it actually, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that one.
Yeah. That, so that's my concern with that one. I haven't, just full disclosure, I have not looked at this for the House yet. That's just being in three senate. We are in three senates now, so I just want to also highlight that. But it's on the opposite side. We have two state senators on the Adams County side currently, right now, and one on Jefferson County. So again, not saying it's bad, but it's just something we want to consider. Mayor Protem?
Just curious, when the next opportunity for input is? This is third or fourth rendition of what they've done with this. Is there another opportunity for us to give comment?
On a different page on this, there is a meetings up here, and it says "meetings." And so there is a congressional redistricting meeting going on tonight. And then tomorrow, yep, tomorrow, there, this is very short notice, right? Like, tomorrow is the Legislative Redistricting Commission, and then Thursday. So there's a list on there. There's multiple opportunities, but they're on there.
Yeah, I don't, that might be difficult for us then. I mean, I need to, firstly, I need to kind of look at this. So like, last time I looked at it, we were in 27, like Counselor Scully says. Now it looks like a lot of the city is in 29, and it cuts off kind of at the north edge of the city.
Are you looking at the House?
Yeah, at the House one, yeah. The Senate's just as basic. Where I think, you know, the interesting thing is when we were originally talking about this as a council, I think we were really focused on what a good congressional district was going to be and if it was going to split the city up, since right now we're pretty much in CD7. So I don't think I initially anticipated us getting split up so much into the senate, house districts.
It's, it's interesting, right? Though it's a big conversation, and my apologies because I think I might have been saying redistricting without being specific about the legislative redistricting. And I think, you know, most of the news has been on congressional. In some ways, I feel like the legislative is more relevant to our day-to-day governance and policy issues. I do think we should have a conversation about the congressional, too. You know, do we want to be kept whole if that doesn't happen? Do we want to, you know, how would we ideally, who do we think our other communities of interests are? I think those are fair conversations, and I apologize, this isn't more organized. This just came out. But I did just want to highlight this new legislative map. I thought that they would have it out for us in the morning, and, you know, we would be able to take a little bit more of a peek before we got here tonight. So, you know, policy on the fly is never a good thing. So maybe this is just an invitation for each of us to do our homework on this, to put some thought on this. It may be appropriate that we say we're going to punt. We don't want to weigh in on this, right? The idea of having a nonpartisan commission is, is to kind of let the demographics and the community of interests. But I think each of us are in a very unique spot that we, we know our community, and we can advocate for what we think our community of interests are and why. Mayor Protem, sorry.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Still have my light on. I'm just looking at this map. It's pretty, I mean, 29 looks like it encompasses most of the city. Like, so they took parts of 35 and put it in 29, and basically took Arbada out of 29 altogether.
Correct. In fact, 29 might be our whole city?
It looks like it is, so that might be beneficial.
It looks like.
I'm not sure if that's, no, it's not beneficial. I'm just shaking your head in there.
So according to that split document, there's 30,000 residents that would be in house District 32.
32?
Yes, ma'am. Those are Adams County, 4,000 in Jefferson County.
Huh, so, sorry. It looked like from this that it was all on the other side of the federal. So this is interesting. We need to obviously not have staff held captive as we're trying to scroll through these maps on our iPads about them. That's interesting to have Westminster made whole. That may be a good thing. It might be difficult having two very different school districts, different counties. I don't know. I don't know how I feel about it at this point in time. Very different maps than the first go-around.
Yeah, it was money in the.
Wow, that's, that is one perspective.
Brilliant.
Representation over dinner. All right, all right. Thank you. I'm sorry, Counselor Vols.
Oh, I just want to say, you had mentioned the federal piece. I think it's definitely in that category. We want to be whole and completely in one congressman's or congressperson's district. I think that's helpful. And I think, well, that's all I'll say for now. I haven't looked at the maps yet, so I want to look at them more. But I think at the federal level, it's much better to have one congressperson reporting and having us in their district. So I guess that's a comment I'll make now. I would, I kind of like the system. We have a majority of our city in one state rep district and mostly in one senate district. There may be some who have, you know, part of Jeffco, but I kind of like us being, so I guess that would be my preference right now. So I'm open to more discussion on this, I guess, and I haven't looked at these yet, but I kind of lean more that direction. And I know Counselor Seymour kind of said, and it makes sense, the more you have with parts of it, then you have more people working on your behalf at the Capitol. So I, I want to, I guess, discuss that out a little more. But I think we should take a position. I think if we can agree at some point as a group, I think it would be helpful.
And, you know, if we don't want to be too prescriptive, we could give general policy guidelines. I, you know, we as a, like, you know, do we feel we as a community are more representative of communities like Brighton or are we more representative of communities like Golden, right? Like, who do we, are we more like Arbada or are we more like, you know, Weld? So just kind of who, we could try to talk about who we think we connect with, with communities of interest. We could talk about preference as far as being made whole or having kind of aligned with counties versus non-counties. But there's a whole lot of opportunities to have conversations on this. I think we're going to have to make sure we do not have policy conversations electronically and have a de facto open meeting, like a non-agendized meeting. So we need to be careful on this. I'd ask, maybe we bring our thoughts to the next council meeting and we can discuss them during our council comments, if that's okay? With that, would you recommend that City Manager trip? Or how would you recommend us continuing this conversation to prevent an open meeting violation?
Mayor, I'm just, I'd like to take a look at the calendar and respond to you tomorrow.
Okay, fair enough.
And see where we can get, you know, this into a timeframe if we're not crunched because of something else. Next, next Monday is a budget meeting. I'd like to not have our attention taken away from that if we could. The following week, 27th is another council meeting. I don't know what that agenda looks like. You have a post-agenda item that might, too. What do you, I looked at the calendar briefly. Do you have a timeframe in mind as to when you'd like that? If you were able to come to a conclusion, when you'd like that to be, that might help us to understand.
I think we need to understand what the window is for being able to give any input because if we have the conversation and it's no longer relevant, then it's wasted. So I'm not sure how much longer they're accepting or how, the length of time that they'll be taking public comment.
So we'll look into that and make a judgment on that basis of the feedback that we get, if we can get it. Try to pick a date. But I think you could, on the 27th, clearly handle under your, that's two weeks. Is that too, is that too long? You could talk about it next week, you know, after the budget discussion if you want.
I don't know if it's too long because I don't know how long they're allowing input. So I think that just is dependent upon their calendar. The last date I see is September 18. But perhaps there'll be more added for the next map. All right. Well, thank you, everybody, so much. I apologize. This was a little bit of a disorganized conversation, but I think an important one. So thank you for your patience and for all of those joining us from home tonight. We appreciate your engagement. It is 9:20, and the post-meeting is adjourned.